And to clarify, I had originally sent out some correspondence asking for the three of us, Ms. Morris, Mr. Hidalgo, myself, and actually Dr. Chasson to be on this committee. Was corrected by our council that there's a state statute restricting the members of this committee to the number three for the size of our board. So we are going to have the three of us as the official members of the executive committee. I did ask Dr. Chasson to attend the meetings. Obviously, all board members are allowed to attend the meetings just to get their perspective on things whenever they're available. So Dr. Chasson, please feel free to come up and join us anytime you'd like. All right, I'm going to start off by reading over the items on the agenda for tonight. The first thing is going to be selection of a committee chairperson. Next thing will be discussion of the superintendent's current contract, then discussion of the superintendent's position in organizational structure, and the board discussion of administrative contracts. So, start off with the first item on the agenda, the selection of a committee chairperson. Any nominations?
Yeah, sure. Protocol is typically that the chairman of the board, president of the board serves, so I'd like to nominate Eric.
I accept your nomination. So we have a nomination for the chairperson of the executive committee to be myself, Mr. Kinesic, and we have a first and we have a second, and we'll do a roll call vote for this. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And then I said aye too. So we have three ayes. All right, y'all all caught up. Okay, next thing on the agenda is we are going to discuss the current superintendent's contract with a proposed amendment to the contract. And again, for those in the audience, this executive committee is a forum where it allows board members to dive a little deeper into some of the issues that come up before us. It gives the public also an opportunity to ask questions and dive a little deeper. Some of the issues are of more interest to the public than others, and what we would do or not do is then if we feel compelled to make recommendations from this committee to the full board, but the actions of this committee are not binding of the school board, they are only recommendations to the full school board. So with that, the first item on the agenda, I'm sorry, the second item on the agenda is a proposed amendment to the contract of the superintendent. The recommended action is that the board approve adding the attached addendum to the contract of Superintendent Dr. Donald Aguilar.
Yeah, this is an action item, right? Yep, so I'll make a motion that the board approve adding the attached addendum to the contract of the superintendent Donald Aguilar.
All right, we have a motion to add the addendum for the contract modification and a second motion by Mr. Hidalgo, second by Ms. Morris, and the substantive changes of the, I'll go ahead and read the amendment. There are two major changes. One, the superintendent's contract is currently set to expire May 17th of 2019. With the way that the retirement system works in our system with the state, Dr. Aguilar's retirement is calculated off of his basically highest three years paid. So in order for him to realize the wages in his retirement that he would earn in the year, in his final year, he would need to conclude his contract not on May 17th but June 30th. So this is a six-week recommendation for an extension of his current contract for the purposes of, one, keeping him for an additional six weeks, but also for the purpose of him being able to realize his full last year wages in retirement. The second thing that is significant is there's a new paragraph added that would permit, there was not anything in his contract as far as we could tell that would exclude him for participating in outside activities, outside activities that would be, he would be hired on basically as a consultant. He has a lot of knowledge, he's a PhD, he's done a lot of great things in his career, and he has opportunity to speak, lecture, and I'll go ahead and read the paragraph, self-explanatory. It says, "Outside activities, superintendent shall devote his time, attention, and energy to the business of the school district. However, he may serve as a consultant to other school districts outside of Louisiana or educational agencies, lecture, adjunct teaching, engage in writing activities and speaking engagements, and engage in other activities that are of a short-term duration at his discretion, up to 12 days per year with a 10-day written notice of use of those days. The location and purpose of the absence to the board present with allowances made for emergencies. Superintendent may at his option continue to draw a salary while engaged in the outside activity as described above. In such cases, the honoraria paid superintendent in connection with these activities shall be retained by the superintendent."
Mr. Chairman, I want to, I think I would need to make a couple of minor changes to the motion. I think that the motion needs to read that the executive committee recommend that the board approve adding the attached addendum.
Okay, so they want to make a modification to the motion language and they both agree, the first and the second. Dr. Aguilar, while we're doing this, can you just explain to us how in your absence you would be taking basically your own time, paid time that you've earned?
Absolutely. Well, first of all, may I make a few comments about my contract?
Yes, sir.
So first of all, I want to make it very clear that I absolutely love my job and that we are, I believe, potentially discussing a timely topic, given that before we know it, it will be May 2019. This board will be in its approaching its last six months of service, and I believe it would be difficult for this board to search for a superintendent replacement, given that you only have six months left in your first term in office. So first of all, moving the retirement date anniversary to June 30th, as you mentioned, is, just makes sense in terms of final money that I've been paid in any fiscal year, but I want to make sure that I say very clearly that I'm interested in continuing to work for the Lafayette Parish school system. So if the board would feel like you want to continue working with me, I think we need to have a conversation about extending the contract beyond May 2019 or June 30, 2019, because it has some advantages to you in this district that you are not searching for a new superintendent just six months before your term expires. So I want to put that out, that you understand that for whatever reason, and I want you to know that I have by June 30th of 2018, I will have reached maximum earning capacity. I already have 40 years of service, I'm at 100% of the three best years in terms of pay, and that will be achieved by June 30th, 2018. So staying and continuing to work is because I simply believe that the work is important to me professionally and important to Lafayette Parish. I see this as an opportunity, given that we have placed into motion about three years' worth of construction by recent actions. We've got 36 months to build those six wings, air condition those gyms, and continue to make improvements to facilities and also to academic programs. So I see the next 36 months as something that I want to continue doing for, with Lafayette Parish if at all possible. Now, in terms of the opportunity to go out and consult or do short-term duties, I see that as one day per month on average, 12 days out of a 12-month calendar. I don't anticipate any problem being out of the office one day per month. Would be the same thing as taking an annual leave day or a sick leave day and getting back in the office a day later or two days later and continuing to do my job. So I don't see this impeding my ability to function effectively as superintendent here, and I don't think my staff's going to be burdened by my being out of the office an average of one day per month.
Thank you. I did kind of open it up to the board before the public, but I wanted to make sure that with this corrected motion, Jeremy, is the motion correct now? That I opened it up to public comment. So if anybody in the public has any comment with regard to the extension, the motion is to accept this amendment, I'm sorry, accept this addendum to the superintendent's contract, which would extend his contract by about six weeks and also add the provision that clearly allows him to use his own time to consult as an outside activity. So any public comment? All right. Any board member comment? Any Dr. Chasson comment? All right. Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote. All right, motion carries, thank you. Next item on the agenda is discussion of superintendent's position in the organizational structure. The recommended action is that the board review the existing superintendent's job description, superintendent salaries in the state, the most recent superintendent's advertisement, and a draft job description for a deputy superintendent. And I don't really see a motion coming out of this, but, all right, so I'm just going to open this up to comment. The purpose of this agenda item was for the executive committee to review, well, one, the, based off several requests for superintendent's job description, there's been interest in exploring different ways that our organization can structure, whether it's a traditional superintendent as we have now, or if it's a superintendent that is more, instead of a significant portion of what the superintendent's role is, is not necessarily academic. A lot of it comes from a business side. So there's been some interest in a superintendent, and whether it's called the superintendent, the top of the staff be more of a business-oriented person, whereas the deputy superintendent would then be the person focused primarily on the educational aspects. Please correct me if I'm wrong, fellow board members. So this is an opportunity for us in a committee setting to kind of discuss those options, the pros and cons of those options, get staff input amongst the three of us. I kind of see it as an informal conversational type, we can open any of these in particular you want, talk about them. And I've been giving this a lot of thought, so I'll wait for my opportunity to weigh in, but I'd like to open that up to Mr. Hidalgo, Ms. Morris at this time.
Danielle, do you know the statute designation that authorizes the deputy superintendent? Seventeen. Okay. And my understanding is that it's only the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board that also has a deputy superintendent? I know it's limited by population under the statute, so there are a few places that are big enough?
The parish has to have a population of 200,000. I think that we-
We do, without a doubt.
Yeah. And I looked up in the 2010 census, I think I had 241 or 221, so.
All right, so East Baton Rouge is the only other district that has? What do you don't know?
I don't know, but that they do. But it's a deputy, my God, this is terrible. Let me just, excuse me. A deputy superintendent is, is very rare. Assistant superintendents are, are much more common.
Can you explain what the difference is between a deputy and assistant?
Um, what, I think what might be more, and it might be jumping ahead, but as far as far, in the instance in which you were, if you were to choose in the future a superintendent who, who was more business-oriented, which you were just discussing, in that situation, that would be somebody perhaps who doesn't have, who doesn't have the qualifications of superintendent, who doesn't necessarily have the education background. In that situation, the BESI regulations would require that you have a chief academic officer, and that person would be required to have the qualifications or certifications to be a superintendent. So that's not even, you're not looking at, that's not a deputy or an assistant superintendent, that's a chief academic officer. So that's a little bit different in and of itself. That's, that's the role that you've got to keep your eye on if you're talking specifically about that, looking for a superintendent position in that respect. Deputy superintendent, the role of a deputy superintendent is, it's kind of rare because of the fact that it's almost, the way that the statute's written, it's a really old statute and hasn't been revised, and it's, they serve at the pleasure of the board, and they kind of run parallel to a superintendent. And so most boards don't really put them in place because they kind of, you have, you might find yourself in a little bit of a bind because they'll jump, they could jump to superintendent sometimes, and that you really don't want to find yourself in that sort of position. You want them to answer to a super, you need everyone in your system to answer to the superintendent, not two people answering to the board. The superintendent should be the only person answering to the board. The way the statute's written, a deputy superintendent can almost kind of circumvent superintendent and come straight to the board.
Right, the way that I appreciate it is that this says that the board can hire two people, a superintendent and a deputy superintendent.
Exactly.
So if the board chose, they could have two positions reporting to them directly.
Exactly, right.
Depending on their circumstances.
Right, that would be a deputy superintendent. And they, so then the deputy superintendent could circumvent the superintendent, and so you kind of find yourself having-
And basically, the only guidance that the statute gives is that any school board can appoint a deputy parish superintendent, having such qualifications that the board fixes, and they can fix the salary and the job duties for that parish superintendent. So how they, how they break down the job descriptions between the two positions is entirely up to the board, as long as it doesn't circumvent BESI rules for the academic portion of it.
Right, which is generally what, in so many words, what you do anyway, I mean, because you approve job descriptions, so you set the job duties for all positions anyway at the end of the day, but this one, this one's a little bit more particular because it goes on to say that they serve at the pleasure of the board and answer to the board. So this person kind of gets a little bit ahead of, they get ahead of themselves because they, they're almost, they're equal, they find themselves equal to a superintendent sometimes because they don't answer to the superintendent. And that's, it's a very, it's a little awkward, and you may not want to find yourself in that position. Or you might. But assistant superintendents will, would be under serving, answering to the superintendent.
So the model that I described would be, this business, non-academic, would still be the superintendent, is still legally qualified to be the superintendent.
Absolutely, yeah.
So long as there is also a position called a chief academic officer handling the academic side of it. So that would be, in your opinion-
I mean, I think that that's what, what I understand.
If that was the intent, that would be the structure that-
Correct.
Not necessarily a deputy.
Correct. That's what, that's what's, it's, there's, it's, there's a, the regulations are written for districts who are trying to go what I, what I believe is what you're describing to me, to fill for that position.
So, I'm sorry, one more if you don't mind. So under the documents that are here and the model that Mr. Kinesic described, the BESI regulation excerpt that's included indicates that a superintendent can be retained as a superintendent even if they don't yet have their superintendent certification, but that would still require them to be certified as a teacher and the other various certifications between that. So under the model that Mr. Kinesic describes, they would have to both have teaching certificates at a minimum. So if we wanted to look at somebody who was not necessarily a certified teacher, you might have to leave the academic portion under the superintendent and have all the business part of it under the deputy superintendent, so that if we want somebody who's-
Okay, so that's a different model.
Business versus academic.
That's it, so I understand what you're saying now. You're saying that's a different model, that allows the business aspect to be handled by this deputy, who is reporting then also to the board and to the, is the deputy, the deputy doesn't report to the superintendent, just to the board?
It depends on how we set up the job description. The board can decide if they report only to the board or if they go-
Exactly.
To the superintendent and the board. That's going to be up to whatever is adopted by the board.
Right. The, the job description that was drafted and attached to the agenda is written to where that deputy superintendent would, would answer to the superintendent, but the statute doesn't require that it be written that way.
All right, this really is my last one. So if we reversed it, is there anything that would require, assuming the deputy superintendent is the academic side of it, can the academic superintendent, the educational part of it, report to a non-educational superintendent? Or is there some criteria that there be that, the direct reporting from the academic to the board? Do you understand my question?
I do.
Okay.
But it's, that position is a chief academic officer, not a deputy superintendent, and that person goes to the superintendent.
Right.
The superintendent is still the superintendent.
Yeah, I got you.
In that, in that scenario. That's what, that's what's in 505, BESI, bulletin 741, section 505.
So my early appreciation of this is whether or not the title would be deputy superintendent or whether or not the title has to be deputy superintendent, model is kind of what I was thinking along the lines of. And so whether or not the superintendent would be the supervisor over that position or not is one thing, but having that position, I get what you're saying about you may not want two different folks reporting to the board. I think there's pros and cons to that, and I think they're, in my mind right now, almost equals. I'm still early on in this, but I envisioned having a business side and an academic side separate. So in my mind, if you have a business side and academic side, and everybody's reporting to one person, they're not separate. Well, you see what I'm saying? If they're reporting to the academic person, or if the academic person is reporting to the business person, they're not separate. So without having, I've done a lot of research, that's my appreciation of it, is that it be separate, separate sides.
And just to clarify what Mr. Hidalgo's model, I think, I think if I understand what you're saying, you would, and I have to preface this, is Dr. Aguilar has a contract to Lafayette Parish school system for another 18 months. So I want to make sure that nobody feels that this conversation is reflective on anything other than the fact that we are trying to educate ourselves on all the ways that we can improve the system or not. And we're going to open it up to public comment and staff member comment as well. Right now, we're just trying to make sure we're talking about the right things. And then as far as I understand what you're saying is if you had these two lines, you would, you would think they need to report to the board, not that the business reports to the academic or the academic reports to the business. Is that, okay. So for that structure, would that be a superintendent and a deputy superintendent with different roles? One, one for academics, one for business operations?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
The deputy superintendent would be in this business role.
Okay.
However, you're going to find that you're going to probably have trouble with that person meeting the qualifications for a deputy superintendent, because a deputy superintendent still has to have, be qualified as superintendent, whereas the opposite would not.
But a superintendent doesn't have to be qualified to be a superintendent.
Exactly.
Well, but where are the requirements for a deputy superintendent? The only thing the statute says is that those job duties and qualifications will be set by the board. I don't know of any BESI regulation that addresses what qualifications a deputy superintendent would have.
Yeah, I guess you could, you could have them have whatever qualifications you want, I suppose.
Mr. Chairman, I think maybe somehow we can get rid of the titles for a moment and just talk about the model. It doesn't matter what they're called. Doesn't matter if it's superintendent, chief academic officer, deputy superintendent, doesn't matter what the title is. Talk about the model, see if the model is doable. We could plug in the, the job titles later.
Okay. I mean, I think we understand that, and again, it's only the three of us, so correct me if I'm wrong. What we're talking about is a model where there are parallel, and I could, we could actually use our staff-
Yeah, it would be bill, right.
Academic, so, 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 sorry, Dr. Aguilar, let's just pretend you're not here, because we have right now, we have right now in operations, I'm just going to use Mr. Craig, Ms. Samick. Ms. Samick primarily handles academics, primarily. Mr. Craig primarily handles operations, okay? So hypothetically speaking, if they were our business side and academic side, the business side would be called superintendent and the academic side would be called the deputy superintendent or the other way around?
The other way, right.
Other way around, okay, so.
For your, for your deputy superintendent model.
All right.
Yeah.
And those two persons would, in theory, report directly to the board? And now, okay, well, that's, that's the question that I had.
Yeah, I think, yeah, in your, in the deputy superintendent model.
Yeah, obviously, we have to do a lot more research and, you know, cross the bridge at the right time, but I think I understand what the initial goal here is. I have some concerns. I am, I am, I mean, I am, that's all I do, I am a business person, and one of the biggest learning curves that I learned coming into this job, or I mean, our school board job, was that, and I think it's similar to, and I hate to use this analogy, but I think it's similar to our president coming into government services. Someone coming from a business aspect that runs a business, that owns a business, has the, has the freedom to cut where it needs cut and to restructure where there needs to be, you know, restructured, to go to typical, you know, I can primarily, within reason, go to whatever contractor I want for services. go to whatever contractor I want for services. And I think one of the frustrations that any business person would come into a system like this that hasn't worked for a government entity is the plethora of regulations that we're all bound by, I mean, all this stuff that we're talking about, you know? I wanted to have four people on this committee, and I can't, because there's some obscure state law saying I can't, right? So, I can, I can't imagine the frustration of a business person coming into an organization like this and saying, hey, you know, this, this department's too big, this department's too small, I'm just going to, I'm going to shift people around, and, you know, there's, there's uproar here or there. There are a lot of, there are a lot of union issues that, and correct me if I'm wrong at any time, but there are a lot of union issues that we have to deal with and a lot of red tape, essentially, a lot of government-imposed regulation that someone not familiar with that would have a significant learning curve coming into a system like this. So that was, that's my kind of primary concern, is, is how could we set someone up hypothetically, right? How could we set somebody up for success in a system like that? Where we say, hey, come in, make us more efficient, right? Lean sigma six us, right? Do whatever you can to make us more efficient. And then, the person's then frustrated with, well, you know, I know that you think that we only need this many people in this situation, but state law or bulletin this says we can't. Bulletin this or that says that we need this many people, whether you like it or not. And so that's, that's, that's some of my concerns. I don't have all the answers or the perfect examples, but that was my initial concern with that. I think in theory, I think in theory it could work, and with the right board, I think it could work. But I also think that there are, it may seem simpler than it is in practice when we ask someone who has never done anything like this to come in and try to operate the system more efficiently. So we can talk about that if you want, if you guys have any opinions on that.
Well, I think one thing that would be helpful is to know the titles of all the cabinet members and to kind of see where, assuming we had those two positions, under what branch they would fall, academic versus operational. You used Mr. Craig and Ms. Samick as examples, but Mr. Craig doesn't oversee, for example, the financial side of things right now, right? Because that's Billy and Matt and kind of the other things. But those could theoretically all go under the same branch of the operational side. I guess my other point, too, yeah, there would probably be a sharp learning curve if you could not find a business person with some educational background. But we do have, I think, people available across the country who have experience, maybe not at this level, but maybe in secondary education. So I think that it's something that can be done, and I think the key is having the right cabinet members in place to assist any such deputy superintendent with that learning curve. So I don't think, see that as an insurmountable problem, but I think it's going to depend on choosing, one, creating a good, strong job description that's very clear and unambiguous, and then kind of working from there. Got to figure out how to mesh those two positions together well to avoid any cracks in the sidewalk. That's your job, not mine, or vice versa, and something falling between both, or duplicate control or authority over something. But those are all issues that can be worked out. We're so far from that at this point with the open discussion. But it would be helpful to know the cabinet members or the directors or whatever their titles are now, to kind of fall, see where they fall, whether it's under academic or what we're calling operational or business.
So, Dawn, we can definitely, we can provide that to you. It would take just a little bit of tweaking to try to dissect it into two pathways, but we definitely can do that. The, the idea that we are, we are days away from buying that office building, the academic division is largely going to be across town, it makes sense that as a board, you guys might be trying to go down this path. It would take the right two individuals who can work collaboratively together with the board, but it's not to say it couldn't be done. So, if you don't mind scheduling an executive committee meeting in a month, we can show you the organizational pattern that we have now and maybe propose what it might look like.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to address that. I think that, first of all, let me say that I believe that the superintendent is doing a great job at essentially both of these topics. But, you know, how much longer, year two, three, four, five years, whatever it is, the superintendent is going to stay in the business, we don't know. So we don't know what the future holds. I, I can only speak from the business perspective, because much like you, that's where I've been my entire adult life. I don't know anything about education, I don't pretend to be an educator. But let's face it, as much as some folks don't like to hear it, this is the largest business in Lafayette Parish. Our budget is humongous, nearly 5,000 when you include all subs, employees, 30,000-plus students, transportation department, you get it, it goes on and on. And there is certainly a huge difference from being a business-minded manager and an education-minded manager, in my opinion. And so I see those two things as much different. And you're right, a business owner can go in and make decisions and make changes that maybe they otherwise could not make in, in a system like this. However, we all know that there's red tape, and we all know that there are restrictions in business, in the business world, and regulations. So, I don't think that it's far off to think that, you know, someone could fit in, they would, as the superintendent suggested, would have to be able to work well together. But the great thing is, it's a true form of checks and balances, because if they both report to the board, you can come with two different opinions, and now the board can decide which opinion they want to go with. Whether it's fortunate or unfortunate, the school board makes those types of decisions. And so their, their decisions are only as good as the feedback. I know the superintendent's doing a great job, I hope he stays here quite a while, and certainly nothing to look at before June 30th, or whatever it is, of 2019. But this is definitely something I think we should be looking at, so I don't make any bones about it, I'm, I'm in agreement. In fact, I may have been the one that brought it up to you. I'm not saying it's the answer, and it may not be, but I do believe, you know, I've seen large, medium, and small businesses with good leaders, great leaders, and bad leaders. You can find those all over. And it's much different, in my opinion, to become an A school system from an academic's perspective and manage 30,000 students eating once or twice a day, 19,000 students being transported twice a day, on and on and on. So, that's where I'm at. I think the superintendent's doing a fantastic job, and I want to make it clear, I'm just talking about the future, beyond the superintendent's tenure possibly.
All right. Well, I heard, Dr. Aguilar, if I understood right, you are going to go through an exercise of, now that you understand the, the interest of maybe separating cabinet positions and how this hypothetically could look. The only other thing that I wanted to bring up on this agenda item was the, we have a spreadsheet that shows the superintendent salaries for the state of Louisiana, and they don't have the notes on the last version I saw, but we were looking at Dr. Aguilar's pay and to see if it was comparable to the size of system that we have. And if I remember right, we're within one, if you ranked the number of students in the system, we rank sixth or seventh, is that correct? Maybe sixth, is that correct? But you're seventh in the state in pay? So, that is correct, right? Okay, so, and this is just more for our information, Dr. Aguilar's pay is ranked seventh in the state, we're the sixth-largest school system, so I would say we're within, I guess, the right standard deviation from what his pay should be. I guess that means we negotiated well when we signed his contract. So, that information's out there for anybody interested. All right. Any other discussion from the public on this topic, or? Dr. Chasson? Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Hi, Ella Arsamo. I was just wondering if y'all had an outline of the responsibilities that each position, the superintendent and the deputy superintendent would be doing in the school system, and how it would, how it would benefit our district to even have a deputy superintendent, and how the deputy superintendent's job is different than what Mr. Joe Craig and Ms. Samick does? Would this eliminate their position? Or could this deputy superintendent responsibilities be split between the two of them and added to their position? And I was curious to know, what was a pay? What is the pay scale for a deputy superintendent?
Well, I would
I'm sorry, I can't help myself. When y'all talk, my wheels are turning.
No, those are all great questions, those are all, that's, that's what we're trying to get to, is, and I can, I'll try to answer most of them.
Okay, but before that, I want to say, I'm, I think we're very blessed as a school system to have business-minded people on this board. For this school system to succeed as a whole, we need to look at the picture, the day in, day out of the school system as a whole. So, I'm thankful to have y'all, you on this board.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So just to answer some of your questions, that's what we're trying to figure out, is from the simplest sense, there's the idea that there would be someone that would be focused on the business aspects of the system, while leaving the other person to focus strictly on the academic side. They are not mutually exclusive, but there are a lot of aspects of Dr. Aguilar's job that, or his responsibilities, that, that maybe, maybe if he had more time, not to focus on troubles in transportation, troubles with school security, I'm trying to think of some just hypothetical, maintenance, leaking buildings, those kind of things. Those, those type things might, contract negotiations, contract management. There are a lot of aspects of the business of running a school system that are not necessarily directly academic. But there are some that are highly academic, and our entire mission is academics. So, trying to figure out the right blend of that is exactly what we're trying to do. That's why we're, by the next executive committee meeting, they're going to kind of separate some of those roles and responsibilities hypothetically. And we don't know anything about pay or anything like that at this point. I hope I covered them all. Thank you. Dr. Chasson?
I had about three or four questions. The first question, just curious to know where the, this recommendation technically came from, if anybody knew.
Well, it's not a, I don't say it's a recommendation, I think it's more of a discussion. I mean, Mr. Hidalgo was one who asked me a bunch of questions, asked me to collect a lot of this information. Ms. Morris asked me to collect a lot of information on the, just the concept of exploring the idea.
Okay. Just curious, when it comes to the assistant superintendent versus the deputy, are they both pay grade 14s?
Dr. Chasson, they, they can be whatever the board would decide. Did we show that as deputy superintendent pay grade 14? That was, that's one pay grade above the chief academic and chief administrative officer. That's just the number we used.
Okay. So currently, the assistants are at a pay grade 13? That's right?
Yes.
Okay. So, for all-inclusive purposes, technically speaking, that would, using this model that we have, that would make Mr. Craig the deputy, technically speaking? And I know it may be advertised, or you may have the autonomy to just choose that person, but, well, I guess that's under
I think that would be one, one way to look at it.
Okay.
That in, in the Lafayette Parish school system, you would have a superintendent.
Okay.
But it's also reasonable to assume that the superintendent is not likely to physically direct transportation, food service, maintenance, and all of those other pieces without some support people. And then, the academic person could be much like Annette's job right now, however, they might need some support people as well. We still need directors of schools, Brian Abear and Kathy Aloisio and Bart Thibodeau and Suzanne Thibodeau. We just need to try to figure out, on an organizational chart, you know, where the responsibilities fall, the, the details just would need to be worked out, like how much to pay these individuals, and what would it look like?
Okay. So, a deputy technically wouldn't be the academic side of it. Deputy would then, would technically be what Mr. Craig is doing, right?
It, it could be one or the other.
As a thought exercise, just, or it could be the other? Okay. So based upon who the position of deputy reports to, then that entity would choose the person. Would that be correct? So if the deputy reports to the superintendent as the current job description looks, or example job description, then superintendent chooses that person? But if we have the position report to the board, and the board chooses that person?
Dr. Chasson, I understood that the deputy and the superintendent report to the board.
So if I may, Dr. Aguilar, the statute that allows a deputy superintendent says that the board would determine all of those things. So the board could decide whether the deputy superintendent would report
To the superintendent?
To the super.
Or the board.
And that the super would hire him, or that the, he would report to the board and the board would directly hire them. That would be up to whatever the board decided, if we ever got to that point.
When we decide on the job description?
Same with the job description, and it's possible that with all of the various cabinet members and with any type of potential restructuring, that some of those can be consolidated and the number of director-type positions that we have can be reduced, and
Okay.
So that the finances all work out as well. But this is all, it's all so preliminary
Oh, I know, I just want to, I want to wrap my head around it ahead of time. So if that person does become the chief, if the, if the deputy technically takes the responsibilities of administrative, that administrative position would then be eliminated? And then vice versa, academic, that position would be eliminated? Or we would still try to feel, well, let me ask your opinion, would you still like to fill that position, or would that position become eliminated if we did go the deputy route?
Just very preliminary, I really don't feel comfortable answering what would be eliminated just yet, but it's reasonable to assume, based on what I've heard, is that there would be an individual who would be in charge of the administrative function of the school system, and then there would be someone else, yet to be named, who would be in charge of academics. And then from there, we would just have to build the job descriptions and then build the structure to be effective.
Okay. So, Doc, maybe a little preliminary, but if we did go the deputy route, would you prefer that person to report to the board or yourself? And then vice versa, I'm just going to turn around and ask the board members on the executive committee as well? Because I would want to get an understanding about it ahead of time.
Dr. Chasson, I would do whatever the board directs me to do at this point. My preference would be to make sure we talk this thing through and we understand what the organizational pattern will be. I can give you lots of reasons why what we're doing right now makes perfect sense, but I want to just caution you that I have a pretty good understanding of the financial piece, the administrative piece to this job. I believe because of my prior work experience as superintendent in St. Mary Parish, that is not always going to happen when you select a new superintendent. I can easily see if the superintendent and the deputy superintendent who answer to the board could work well together. I can easily see that.
Okay. Real quick, though, but I'm just, the actual question, just the base question is, who would you prefer the person to report to? Understood everything you said, I'm just trying to get opinions now. I can certainly ask you behind closed doors, I'm just curious.
My, my preference would be that people that work with me, that they would report to me and I would report to the board. But I'm familiar with that organizational pattern.
Okay.
I've, I've seen it I've, I've seen it all my career. We would likely need to go down to EBR and see how that is structured.
Okay. So, a side question on top of that one, just curious, 'cause these are things that either need to be worked through, or someone has an opinion. If the deputy superintendent does report to the board, then do those people that work directly under the deputy superintendent now report to the deputy superintendent? And will their job descriptions need to be restructured as well, with that one-line item changed? Because if Mr. Craig is said person, or some other individual, and that individual now is over transportation, then does transportation now report to the deputy? Or do they, does, does complete autonomy still rest with the superintendent, in anyone's opinion?
My opinion is that, and, correct me if I'm wrong, that all those things put under that individual would report to that individual. Because we can't, as a board, hold anybody accountable to people to, we can't hold them accountable for people that don't work for them, that don't, they don't directly supervise or have interaction with.
Gotcha. That's, that's what I was curious about. That is it. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Is there any other discussion, public discussion, or board member discussion, or staff discussion on this item?
Just wanna make one quick more comment. I was gonna say it to Mr., Dr. Chasson, but just generally, th-these are my early opinions. No research has been done. We don't know pay grade, 'cause we don't have a job description. But everything has to start somewhere. And so, instead of bringing this up as something that I personally researched myself to the board floor, and trying to push it through in a month period, we're starting this really early. So, I think that it deserves full vetting, and the reason I believe the way I do today, which could change, is that I believe that, and anyone, please correct me if you disagree, or, or let me know if you disagree, I believe that a superintendent becomes a superintendent because his or her educational background. It's not because of their business background, because then they would not be eligible to be a superintendent. I'm not saying that our superintendent today does not have a business background, that's not what I'm, I'm here to say. So, I just believe that moving forward, we should take a good look at letting, there are professionals in every industry, and we want the best of the best running each part of our organization, if we can help it in the future. So, that's where it comes from, from my perspective, and I may be wrong here, but that's where I'm at, right now.
All right. Thank you. And Mr. Hidalgo, and just for you, Dr. Aguilar, as well, I know it's difficult for, to be in a position that people are talking about restructuring and whatnot, but as with Mr. Hidalgo, and I think you would agree, that when we're looking at trying to improve a system, a system that's been in existence for many, many decades, many, many lifetimes, that we should be able to convince ourselves that this is either a totally ridiculous idea, or the best idea that's ever come up. We should, as a system, we owe it to the students, to the taxpayers, to, to do the due diligence, to put ourselves through that effort of making tough decisions, and asking those tough questions. And maybe at the end of this, as you said, maybe, you know, six months, 12 months, 18 months from now, we may come back full circle and say, what we have here is perfect, let's not mess it up. But we may not. So, with that, I'm gonna go on to the next agenda item. It is for board discussion of administrative contracts. There is a new draft administrative contract. And the action would be for us to make a motion recommending this to be the draft administrative contract to the full board. Can I get a motion?
It'd be easier for me to contemplate a motion if I understood how this is different from our current contract.
Mr. Kanesek, this is not a draft, this is the current template for all administrative contracts.
Yeah, I don't mean to say, when I say draft, I mean template. I mean, I mean the document that you start from, so template.
Is this the one that we've been using in the recent past? There are no changes to it? All right, then I'll make the motion to approve.
So, we've a motion in a second to approve this to be the template for-
The administrative contracts.
All right. With that, I'll open it up to any public discussion. All right. Any board member discussion? Oh, Dr. Chasson?
If, if there's no change, then why are we approving it?
It's a great question.
I'll happily step down if somebody could just answer from there, if you may.
The law requires the board to approve administrative contracts, and I was asked to look at the administrative contracts, and when I looked up the history, y'all have approved the principal contract, which is the same form, and for assistant principals, you had approved it, specifically for those positions, though. So, I'm just bringing it to you as a formality, if you would approve it, just so we'll be in compliance with the law. And, and Ms. Boudreau-
Well, we're still gonna approve each individual contract after it's drafted and written, right?
Well, this would be for all central office administrators receive this contract. You've already approved a template for all principals, and then you approved a template for all assistant principals.
Right. I guess my question then goes back to council. Is the statute requirement that we approve these contracts, or that we approve the template that these contracts are written on? 'Cause I think that's two different things. I don't think the board is supposed to approve a draft that's not filled out. I mean, I don't mind us saying, yeah, we like this template.
Well, well, first of all, so are you saying that these are... These are not principal? Because they say principal.
Well, the principal would receive this as well, but when we, they approved the motion. When I went back and looked, they approved the contracts to be issued to principals, because they had different specific performance, um, attach objectives, specific performance objectives that are attached. They're different. So, they approved that for the principals, they approved one for the assistant principals. And since it was brought to my attention, and I was asked, you know, Mr. Kanesek had to ask about them, I just noticed that they had never approved them for the central office, so that's why I had, specifically for the central office.
Who, who in central office? I mean-
Anyone that requires a certificate for their positions and is entitled to a contract.
Okay. Well, they wouldn't, their contracts wouldn't be exactly like this, because these contracts are very, this, this contract that's attached to this agenda item is specific for principals, because it say that, it says that they, you know, make all decisions regarding hiring and placement of personnel at schools and stuff like that.
Well, we can revise it, I can get with you and revise it if I need to, but this is the one that, the last one I was gotten, given for administrator, so we had used it for every administrator, and just, you know, changed the specific performance objectives.
Okay.
So, I'm gonna withdraw my motion. It sounds like this needs to go to our council before it comes to us.
If this, right, if this is for a principal, then, then yes. If it's not for a principal, then it needs to be changed.
All right. Motion's withdrawn. So, I do have a question. Are we required, can you answer that question about, is it the template or the contract that we're required to approve?
Depends on who you ask. There are different schools of thought on that. Generally speaking, if, if you approve the form of the contract, it, they're all the same. Nothing changes in it besides the name of the person, and the date that it starts and ends. So, what you need to approve pursuant to the statute is, are the terms of the contract. And so, by approving the, this form of, of the contract, you have approved the terms of the contract. So, technically, that would be sufficient. It would be probably, I'm not sure how many contracts are issued each year here, but every principal, every other contract, may not.
So, and I go, this is, I think, a legal question.
It is.
If the board is required to approve the contract, yet the superintendent has the authority to hire and fire at will, the, his, his principals, for instance, then-
You can't, I mean, you can't-
But, but you could, for instance. Let me say hypothetically, he gives us a contract that extends past May 17th of 2019. And I say, well, your authority ends technically, right, at the end of your contract, at the end of your contract. So, how could you obligate me to continue hiring someone you've hired in this position past the end of your contract? 'Cause that's when your authority ends.
All right. So, Danielle, you can jump in. But one part, there is a statute, at least for principals and people with teacher certificates who are promoted into administrative positions, their contract has to be a minimum of two years. You can't reduce it regardless of when a superintendent's leaving. It's a case that I litigated, so I know. The second part of that is, I recall, and I might have a faulty memory, but I believe that when you read the details of Act One, there is language in there that says it'll be the superintendent who signs those contracts, and not the board. So, I think Act One did change that part of it. So, I believe the answer to your question, I think, is that we approve the form of the contract, but approving each individual contract is an obligation of the superintendent under Act One.
They can, they can bring each one to you, but you can't, you can, that you can't, you can't not, you can't not approve it based on anything-
I'm not asking for that. It's just, at the beginning of our term, we were doing things because that's just how they were done, right? Regardless of the law, and regardless of anything, we were just doing things because that's the way that the board's always done things.
Right.
And we cleaned a lot of that up.
Right.
We said, you don't have to tell us everybody you hire, you don't have to tell us every time you, you know, you spend 72 cents. Tell us the things that you're legally obligated to tell us. So, this is one of those examples that, if it is not required for us to do, and is a part of our job, then we don't wanna do it. All right. Okay.
You just approved all the terms in it. Once he hires a body, and it cannot be checked on the contract.
Right. Right. So, that's why, don't, don't let us think that we can, 'cause otherwise, we might. So, all right, well, thank you. I think that concludes our business for today, so I'm gonna call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.
All right. Tommy's not here. Wanna sit in? It's up to you.
What do these people sign? They sign the principal contract?
So, the first item on the agenda is selection of committee chairperson. Ms. Morris, I'd like to actually make a motion that we, that we postpone this agenda item till next meeting.
I agree.
All right. We got a motion in a second.